Welcome everyone to the Carbondale City Council Candidates Forum, sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Jackson County. I'm Maggie Flanagan and I'm honored this evening to be your moderator. With that said, please be forgiving if we run into an Amazon, an Amazon, a Zoom glitch. This is kind of new to me, so we will keep going at it. So our thanks go to Jennifer Robertson. She is the Carbondale Public Library Director. Her efforts have provided a platform to make this forum and a number of other civic events possible for our community. Thank you, Jennifer. In the April 4th Consolidated Election, Carbondale voters will have the opportunity to elect the next mayor and three city council members. There are seven candidates running for the three council positions. The League of Women Voters truly appreciates the candidates' willingness to, to speak tonight and display their desire to serve on the Carbondale City Council. I will introduce the council candidates in alphabetical order. Unfortunately, candidate Joshua Lipton is ill and will not be joining us this evening. Now, I'm going to introduce you all, and I think if you would say hello when I, when I say your name, so people in the audience might attach a name to a face. So here we go. Let's see, Mr. Lee Fronterberger.
Hello, good evening.
Good, good. Tom Grant.
Good evening and hello.
Okay, Claire Kilman.
Hello, everyone.
Good, Adam Luz.
Hello.
Nancy Maxwell.
Hello.
And Justin Zerlinden.
Hey, everybody.
Good, good. So everybody's working in their microphones. That's great. Okay, so this is, this is how the evening's event will proceed. The candidates will each have two minutes for an opening statement, during which they may introduce themselves, explain why they decided to run for Carbondale City Council, and describe what kinds of knowledge and experience they feel are needed to be an affected council member. Then we will have four, actually then we have thirteen questions to be answered by three candidates in a rotating order as listed in the handouts distributed to the candidates. One and a half minutes is allowed for each question. All questions were provided in advance to the candidates. I will ask the candidates to monitor the time that's going to be posted on the, on the screen, so you know that how much time you have left for your answer. Finally, we'll have closing statements from each candidate with a time limit of one minute each. Candidates, please watch the countdown timer. If you see your time has expired, go ahead and finish the sentence, but please conclude your remarks promptly. Okay, candidates, do you have any questions to how this will evolve? Okay, I think you're all pretty experienced in these things, so we will, we will move ahead. I'm going to go to the first question or the question. In your opening statement, what kinds of knowledge and experiences are needed to be an affected city council member within the city manager form of government? And the first, the first question will be answered by Mr. Fronterberger, Mr. Grant, and Ms. Kilman. Mr. Fronterberger.
Maggie, they didn't do their opening statements yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. See, I told you. Opening statements, okay, alphabetical order, Lee Fronterberger first.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters and Public Library for hosting this Candidates Forum for the upcoming city election on April the 4th. I have continuously been a homeowner and taxpayer here in Carbondale for over thirty years now. During that time period, I have volunteered alongside other community-minded citizens to improve the quality of life in our town of Carbondale. Some of those projects and organizations were the Super Splash Park, Toys for Tots Toy Distribution, Main Street Program, Keep Carbondale Beautiful, several park district advisory committees, Habitat for Humanity, Boys and Girls Club fundraiser, Varsity Theater Restoration, and most recently, the Carbondale Community Pet Safe Dog Park. I have also given financial support to the All-Inclusive Playground at Turley Park, the Science Center, WDBX Community Radio, and the City of Carbondale Parks and Recreation Foundation Fund. In the past year, I have established and fully funded an endowed scholarship for a Southern Illinois student to major in either landscape or production agriculture at SIUC. My community service includes ten years as a city councilman and four years on the City Planning Commission. As a councilman, I do my homework researching and communicating with staff at other cities to gain a broader understanding on an issue or project. It is important for a council member to be a good listener and be able to work well with fellow council members and city staff throughout all areas of operations. I want to see Carbondale continue to be and grow even more as a regional retail, medical, educational, and arts and entertainment center for the Southern Illinois region. I advocate for rehabbing of our neighborhoods through curb appeal grants, conversion of real properties back into owner-occupied, single-family housing, and down payment grants for the first-time homebuyers. I want to see a more diverse local economy with the encouragement of small business development aided by startup grant program. By working together, Carbondale can make strides and be known as the city right on track. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fronterberger. Mr. Grant.
Thank you, Ms. Flanagan, and thank to the League of Women Voters for having us here tonight. So just to let you know a little about my background, I came to college here back in nineteen seventy-nine. I am a graduate of SIU. I am one of those people that came and never left. But I went to work for the city as a housing rehab specialist back in nineteen ninety-four after getting out of self-employment, ran my own construction company prior to that, created jobs in the region, and then moved up through the ranks of the city as the building inspector and then the division manager for the head of code enforcement for the city of Carbondale. I served on the planning commission after that and have been serving on the council for two years now, and am looking, seeking a third term. I love this town. I love its initiatives. I've been trying, but working very hard as a city council member and, and with staff to expand our sustainability programs. I served as ex-official on that committee and to green up the city and bring alternative energies here and alternative transportation modes, and appreciate everybody's input and encourage everyone to become more involved in their community. Thank you.
Very nice. Thank you, Tom. Thank you. Ms. Kilman.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks to everyone who's also following along with us in our forum today. We appreciate you stopping in to hear what we have to say. I came to Carbondale one decade ago to build a better life in a place I knew I could cultivate the qualities in myself that have helped me grow into the woman that I am today. I'm running for Carbondale City Council because as the world grows darker outside of Carbondale and Illinois, I know that Carbondale can continue to be a beacon for others like me seeking a better life. I think what makes a councilperson most effective is an understanding of the parliamentary procedures necessary to implement your ideas and make decisions quickly and reflexively, a willingness to meet with city staff who know exactly what's going on in the city at all times, a willingness to listen to your constituents or even residents who don't necessarily vote for you, and most importantly, leadership qualities like decisiveness, being action-oriented, and an impeccability of one's own word are integral to the strength of character of elected bodies like our city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kilman. Mr. Luz.
Well, thank you for having me. I appreciate the league putting this on. We were asked to address what kinds of knowledge and experiences are necessary to be an effective council member and a council manager of formal government. To me, the key piece of necessary knowledge is that the council sets the policies. Staff executes the policies that council sets, and staff also makes the day-to-day decisions at the direction of the city manager, and the city manager does those things in accordance with the council's policies. Influence in this runs both ways. What I mean by that is that council has to rely on the city manager and other staff to get advice, but the manager has to take direction from the council even when the direction that the council wants to steer policy is not what the manager would prefer. I do think it's valuable to have council members who have a variety of experiences, and I don't think there's any one particular path or set of experiences that's necessary. That said, I do think that it's useful if a person has served on some committee, some city commissions before running. I think it helps people become familiar with the relevant issues. I also think that it shows how they'll perform in office. Before being elected, I did serve on the planning commission and the sustainability commission. I also think that both professional experience and personal experiences matter. I'm the only lawyer on the council and the only one running in this election. That experience has been useful to me in my work on the council. I'm also the only council member who has a child attending Carbondale Public Schools, and I think that's important. And if we say we want more families with children in Carbondale, I think it helps to have someone on the council who understands what that experience is like and how we can improve it. Aside from specific experiences, I do think skills are important in council members, and the most important one of all is the ability and willingness to find common ground and compromise. I do have a knack for finding compromise, and I've found that to be very useful. Finally, I think about the but-for issues, and what I mean there is what are the things that wouldn't have happened but for a given person's presence on the council? In this last term, there are at least two but-for's for me. One was the city resuming management of parks that the city owns, and the other is the creation of a community housing trust.
Thank you, Mr. Luz. Ms. Maxwell.
Hello, I apologize for me not being on the screen, but I'm having technical difficulties. My name is Nancy Maxwell, and I'm honored to be here today. I want to thank the Women League of Voters for holding this space for candidates running in the election. I'm here to ask for your vote. I'm a leader, but a team player. I've been on the front line in this community for years. I believe I have a good idea of what changes need to be made today to create a healthy and save Carbondale for tomorrow. I, I worked for the Survivor Empowerment Center, formerly known as the Women's Center. I'm the community outreach manager. I also am the executive director for Carbondale United and the vice president for the Black Chamber of Commerce and a member of, in ACP, just to name a few things that I do in the community. I need to be at the table to give that vote, to make those changes. I want to put unity back in the community, creating relationships to work together for equity. I want to protect women's healthcare rights because they are human rights. I want to keep jobs local and support project labor agreements. I want equality in infrastructure. Every neighborhood deserves a self and healthy sidewalk, street, and water. I want to build a community task force to continue building relationships with other organizations addressing systemic change and focusing on violence and oppression. I need your vote so I can get to work for you and all of Carbondale. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell. Mr. Zerlinden.
All right. Hey, everybody. My name is Justin Zerlinden. First of all, I want to thank the League of Women Voters and the library for putting on this event. We don't get to have these very often. We don't get to have these discussions, especially in front of other people, and so it's really great to be able to share our ideas. This forum specifically is all people who are really excited about what's going to happen in Carbondale over the next four years. The, the things that are going to happen and the things that we're going to make happen is really exciting, so I'm excited to be here and honored to be here. I'm running for council because I believe in Carbondale. I believe that Carbondale has a ton to believe in. I believe that Carbondale has a ton of people who are ready to make changes and who are ready to invest, who are ready to build, who are ready to make Carbondale a really great place, and so we're right on the precipice of something great, and I want to be a part of that. Our city council needs a wide range of experiences, like the other candidates have said. It's important that the city council reflects the people who are here, both in looks and in ideas, and so I think that it's important to make sure that our council is representative of the people. I think it's important to have intentional conversations and not shy away from hard topics, and I think that's probably hard to do from the council level, but I think we need to be willing to step into some conversations that need to be had to make Carbondale great. Finally, we have to listen to our constituents. We have to listen both in meetings and be willing to meet, be willing to respond to emails, be willing to have conversations with people in Carbondale and in other towns that are trying to engage us in how to make Carbondale a good place or trying to help us to correct something that's not great. And so, you know, those are things that we need to be working on, and as a city councilperson, I would love to be that person. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zerlinden. Nicely done, everyone. And I think that we will transition into the questions that you all are aware. You received all the questions in advance. One of them, and keep in mind, it's one and a half minutes for each answer. And the first three to address the first question will be Mr. Fronterberger, Mr. Grant, and Ms. Kilman. So here we go. Carbondale's main water supply is Cedar Lake. In view of the current discussions to increase recreational opportunities around the lake, please explain how you would ensure that water quality and quantity is protected. Mr. Fronterberger first.
Okay. The quantity of water would be no real issue at Cedar Lake as Cedar Lake is a spring-fed lake and has a large watershed area. The city greatly values city lake and would not allow any damage to water quality. No gas engine boats or jet skis are being proposed. Mostly, the improvements are like canoe, kayak, docks, camping sites near the water's edge, hiking, and mountain bike trails. And keep in mind, everything right now is in a proposal phase. Nothing has been said in stone. So I don't think the city is looking to do any damage to Cedar Lake at all, so it'll remain a pristine site. But the city does want such, such a beautiful site. The city wants to get more people out there to enjoy that venue that we have right here at our doorstep. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fronterberger. Mr. Grant.
Thank you, Ms. Flanagan. So this, the proposals are mostly pedestrian and/or, as Lee mentioned, sail-and-or-paddle-friendly recreational on the lake surface itself and pedestrian around the surface. There has been some discussion about biking, and if the paths are laid out correctly, that could be accommodated also. The Cedar Lake has over many years now, for decades, been undergoing shoreline revetments to help stabilize the shoreline and keep the water clean and stop erosion from entering into the lake. And that will continue as long as funds are available wherever it's needed. There has been a recent proposal for an RV location on the lake. There was one proposed much earlier, many years ago, and I asked staff to go back and look at that and see if they can find it for reference for the consultants that we hired to put that together. As far as quantity of the water, it is spring-fed, and unless we get into a drought situation like the West, we really shouldn't have a problem there. But if we do run into something like that as climate change, if it were to have that effect on us, we would certainly have to look at limiting recreation there and limiting what's going on in order to keep our water supply good and running into our supply house.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Thank you. Ms. Kilman.
Yes, I'm very lucky to have as a father-in-law Leonard Kilman, the former water plant superintendent for Ren Lake Conservancy District, and as a friend Christina Kuns, the coordinator at our water treatment plant in Carbondale. The main concern with recreational activity, as I understand it, would be the prospect of sedimentary disturbance on the part of people engaging in the recreational activity if that were to come up, which it sounds like what's at play here is a lot of surface-level activity. However, if there were any developments that disturbed any of the below-water sediment, it would really only present a problem if the disturbed sediment was something that the treatment plant couldn't plan for in advance. So if there were some chemical that were kicked up due to recreational activity and our water treatment plant was unaware of that being kicked up and getting into the water supply, that would be the only way in which recreational activity could really compromise water quality at the level of consumption. And so a simple sediment test should be able to be performed prior to any newly constituted recreational activity, and that should update our water treatment plant on what exactly it would get a hold of in case anything was there. Carbondale has a wonderful water treatment plant, and they do a good job of keeping us safe.
Nicely done, candidates. Very nicely done. Okay, question two. And this will be for Mr. Luz, Ms. Maxwell, and Mr. Zerlinden. There are often complaints about the general condition of streets in Carbondale. What do you think the city should do to address potholes and other infrastructure needs? Mr. Luz. Mr. Luz, I think you might be muted.
My apologies.
Okay.
The, the potholes are a perennial problem, and they get especially bad in the winter. No one likes them, but the fact of the matter is it just isn't possible to completely fix them until warm weather arrives. You can put down some hot patch, but people drive over it. It doesn't set up, and you've got the pothole back again. The potholes, I think, have been worse during the last couple of years, and there's a reason for that. And during COVID, when our revenue experienced significant drops, we redirected some gasoline tax money in order to preserve city services, which left less to fill, to fill potholes. However, nevertheless, we have been doing major projects. South Oakland Avenue has been recently reconstructed. This budget year, there's going to be major resurfacing projects that are going to take place on Pleasant Hill Road and on Tower Road. We recently received grant money to improve both North Wall Street and South Wall Street. Ultimately, I think the city needs to look at the lifetime cost of various surfacing options. You get ten to fifteen years on asphalt. You get twenty-five to thirty-five years out of concrete. No one really knows how long you get out of brick because the brick streets the Romans built are still there two thousand years ago. And I have asked on multiple occasions why we don't just scrape the asphalt off of our old brick streets. You find the places that have the brick streets like Monroe Street and Jackson Street, they don't get the potholes that you get with asphalt and with concrete, and there's a side benefit. Driving on a brick street tends to slow people down, which makes the streets more accessible for pedestrians and cyclists.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Luz. Ms. Maxwell.
We've been watching our infrastructure crumble, not only locally, but statewide and nationally. Until a scientist discovers a cost-effective process to create materials that will produce longevity and the least amount of carbon emission production, we must look to the pavement preservation, starting with pothole prevention. We can prevent most potholes by using preservation treatments early on before they begin to form. Sealing cracks in the pavement is the most important step in preventing potholes. So what does that look like? Do we need to retrain road crews to expect for cracks, especially before wet seasons? Do we need to add more jobs? I believe the answer to both of these questions is yes. The important point that I want to address with this question of our infrastructure today, there is an injustice going on in Carbondale. You can go in one neighborhood and see decent streets that have repairs and updates, and then there are neighborhoods in Carbondale that haven't been touched in years. There must be equity in our infrastructure. When our sidewalks and streets are healthy, we feel worthy. To me, the neglect is systemic. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Maxwell. Mr. Zerlinden.
All right. So just like other areas of our life that we trust the professionals to do their job and try to hire the best, I think that's what we need to do in Carbondale, and I think that's what we have done in Carbondale. And so, yes, potholes are a problem, but I think we need to be educating people on the process of what it takes to fill a pothole, what it's going to look like. That communication would go a long way in letting residents know that we're not just not taking care of it. We are working through the process of getting it fixed, and here's what that looks like over time. We do have C Click Fix, which is a way that residents can easily report potholes and other issues with private and public property. That app is very simple to use. Not enough people use it, not nearly enough people use it, and I feel like sometimes I'm the only one that is reporting stuff all the time and bugging building and neighborhood services. But that app allows the city to fix things quicker and to see patterns of where things are going wrong. And so the more people that use that app, the more information we have to make good decisions about where we need to be focusing funds and time and effort within the city. But like I said, you know, we'd need to trust the professionals. As a city council, we should be working to find smart people to run those departments, not trying to micromanage.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to question three. The city budget reveals sources of city revenue and city expenses. What, if any, changes would you recommend in the way the city allocates its funds? This question will be answered by Mr. Grant, Ms. Kilman, and Mr. Luz. Mr. Grant first.
Thank you. I really don't have an issue with the way the city is allocating most of its funds right now. We have to take care of the people that work for us. We do have excellent staff working at the city, and they work hard for us. It's not always readily apparent to the general public, but there is a lot of time and effort that goes into all of the things, not just on the day-to-day, but also out into the future and looking ahead. There are some changes perhaps coming down the way we have been spending certain monies in the past that need to be addressed because I don't feel like we are, as citizens, getting the bang for the buck that we might be getting from somewhere else. And it wouldn't be to do away with that particular program, but possibly allocate the funds in a different manner into that particular program.
Okay, all right. Ms. Kilman.
I've been a longtime supporter of the investment of our city resources in a four-pronged plan intended to meet our residents' basic needs, including the ones that cannot vote for me and do not have a voice in our democracy. That includes an investment in food autonomy and keeping our residents fed, which is the humane thing to do, a team of care workers as a separate task force to the Carbondale Police Department capable of taking the burden of building community and responding to nonviolent calls off their shoulders, a renewable energy fund to solarize residential homes as an investment in our energy future, much like our curbside appeals grant program but for meeting our residential energy needs, and a cooperative business fund to ensure that And a cooperative business fund to ensure that everyone living and working in Carbondale has access to the spirit of entrepreneurship that is so necessary for the robust economic life of a city.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Luz?
Well, uh, the budget process is opaque to many people. Uh, it generally works pretty well, uh, but there's always an option to improve things. Uh, the thing to understand about the budget is that it's principally a planning and policy document. And the planning process begins a little more than six months before council actually votes on a final budget. And so in years past, we've had organizations that would attend council meetings relatively late in the budget process and wanting to make major changes in the direction of policy and the allocation of of city funds. And by that time, the cake's mostly baked. It's too late. Um, it just isn't possible to make those changes that late in the process. And so in response to that, I suggested that we begin having a meeting at the very beginning of the budget process that would allow residents to uh attend and organizations to attend and propose the kinds of big changes that were being asked for uh to the direction of policy that council sets in the budget and we did that. Um, to me, the best improvement in in the process is a improvements that allow the public to make sure that they are able to have meaningful contributions. I think we've done that somewhat and I think there's more room to improve and we'll keep doing it.
Thank you all for your answers to that question. I'll add a footnote for the general public that the Carbondale City's budget is available for review at the Carbondale Public Library and online at the City of Carbondale's website. So anybody is is welcome to review and look things up. All right now, uh, number five. Um, there are a large number of vacant single and multifamily rental properties in Carbondale. Many of which are dilapidated. How would you address this issue? And Ms. Maxwell first?
Are we gonna have a chance to talk through number four?
Oh, what with the number four, the city has. Ms. Maxwell is the um, the first to respond to number four. Oh, okay. So this is, oh, Mr. Zerlinjin, is that right? Yes, thank you. Nope, Mr. Luke.
I I think it's um Nancy Maxwell for question four. Is that the one that you just asked?
We asked question five. We need to backtrack and ask question four.
You need to go back to the four. Sorry, I I spotlighted the wrong person too. I apologize.
Okay, all right. I told you the glitches will occur. Okay, number four and um, uh, we did the city miss. I'm sorry, um, Jennifer?
Yep.
Which one we just did, the the sales tax one? Oh, not the sales tax one, number four. Okay, thank you. All right, let's go to number four. The city has lost significant amounts of sales tax revenue. To retain store closing, um, uh, due to store closings and gas tax revenue as people change to more efficient electric vehicles. What ideas do you have for replacing revenue or what cuts would you recommend? Okay, Ms. Maxwell?
Okay, uh, I don't necessarily believe that cuts are the answer. But I believe that we should find new revenue. A gas tax is codependent on fossil fuel industry and not a good idea uh in the time of global warming. Other states have implemented programs to tax miles used by EVs and mileage-based used tax, using a driver's honesty in reporting mileage used or requiring a gadget to be placed on your car to record. This is not forward-thinking and is funded by the oil industry. We need to consider property in Carbondale used and owned by some of the bigger corporations. Who are exempt from paying property taxes, leaving the burden on our residents. I would exclude the university. Our public roles are used by these corporations to haul their goods, carry their employees to and from work, which is wear and tear on our infrastructure. We are not seeing their profits but paying for the use of infrastructure. Resident property tax is extremely high. We need a fair share, state of mind.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell. Mr. Zerlinden?
Thank you, Ms. Flanagan. Um, so I think that we need to focus on bringing more people to Carbondale from surrounding towns and surrounding states. I think it's interesting that the question says the city has lost significant amounts of sales tax revenue. But every city, every state in our country is losing significant amounts of sales tax revenue from from these big box stores. People are shopping online, uh, people are not going to the mall as a way to shop and so we need to make a shift. We need to figure out a a different way to uh to recoup this tax money. Um, I I also, like Nancy said, I don't think cuts uh, are recommended. Uh, after looking at the budget and talking with several staff. You know, there's, they've done a good job of getting as lean as possible to still serve as as many residents as they do and so. I think this looks like uh passing ordinances and making procedural changes that support tourism, uh, support nightlife, festivals and events that come to Carbondale. I think this looks like reasonable Airbnb reform. Uh, right now the restrictions are far too uh restrictive and we need to open those up and allow people to invest in properties in Carbondale that uh, otherwise people are not going to invest in. Um, as I look around at neighboring cities, you know, I do see small businesses thriving. But I also don't see brand-new big-box stores opening up all over the place and so I don't think this is a Carbondale problem. I think it's much broader than that. Um, but so we've got to be proactive here in Carbondale by loosening some restrictions and figuring out how to keep businesses here and to bring new ones.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Franaburger.
Well, in the near future, I'm sure that states and cities will probably institute a tax or a fee for electric vehicle charging to make up for the loss of motor fuel taxes. And then going after more grants, both federal and state. The city has been pretty uh successful lately of uh getting both federal and state grants that'll help bring in more money to the community. And also the city should highly publicize the enterprise zones and the TIF districts to encourage development of local and national businesses to keep Carbondale the regional shopping destination. Which will bring in more sales tax revenue. Uh, as far as cuts, police and fire, which are essential services, should not be cut. But possibly projects on the capital improvement program list may uh need to be postponed in times of reduced revenues. So police and fire are off the board for any cuts as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Franaburger. Okay, now we will get back to number five. Okay, and I'll repeat it. There are a large number of vacant and single-family and multifamily rental properties in Carbondale. Many of which are dilapidated. How would you address this issue? And the first person would be Ms. Kilman?
Thanks, Maggie. In criminology, the broken windows theory states that visible signs of crime, antisocial behavior and civil disorder create an urban environment that encourages further crime and disorder. And I think it's fair at this point to say that the large number or even the impression that there are a large number of vacant homes and rentals could be a contributing factor to the myriad of issues we face right now as a city. Um, obviously, raising them to the ground as soon as they become uninhabitable is important. Um, I consider housing a human right, but no one should live in uninhabitable conditions. The incentivization of onboarding services and streamlining the process by which new residents feel like fully fledged members of city life is of primary importance. Our population has deflated over time. Um, and this is a fixable problem. It's a problem that has a solution. Much like what um Justin Zerlinden was just talking about. Making Carbondale a space where people feel like they can come to easily quickly integrate and live a life worth living. And will help fill the housing vacancies of what spaces we have available that are inhabitable condition and hopefully resolve some of these issues.
Mr. Luz?
Well, we have uh taken some steps already and we need to take more. In terms of steps that we have taken already, we have take, we have created the Community Housing Trust, which I mentioned briefly and that's the subject of the next uh, the next question. The idea there is to get some of these older homes that still have good bones out of the hands of landlords. And into the hands of an organization that can rehabilitate them and then make them available for people in the community to purchase at prices that they can afford. And that's more complicated than I can get into in in a minute and thirty seconds, so I'll move on to new steps. Uh, we do need to take additional steps to hold abusive landlords accountable. I have been advocating for landlord licensing for at least the last couple of years. That would allow the city to revoke the licenses of abusive landlords who simply will not respond to lighter forms of intervention. Uh, I'm running with landlord licensing as part of my platform. It's on my flyers that I'm handing out. And if I'm re-elected, I'm going to see that as an endorsement of that policy change and I will get it done. Uh, this is one of those but-for issues I brought up in my opening statement. That's the kind of thing that will get done if I'm back and won't if I'm not. Uh, I'm also advocating a landlord and tenant ordinance to extend state-level protections to all renters in Carbondale. I'll give you an example of one of these. Uh, there's the return of the security deposit. There is a state law on point that requires that. However, it only applies in buildings of at least four units. We can make that change so that it applies to every building in Carbondale and every renter uh who lives here. And uh, if I'm elected, we will do that. That will happen.
Good, thank you. Ms. Maxwell?
Yes. I'm answering this question.
Uh, the question is, um, there are a large number of vacant, single and multifamily rental properties in Carbondale. Many of which are dilapidated. How would you address this issue?
I didn't prepare for that question because that wasn't the question I was listed on.
Well.
Violence was number six.
Number six and seven.
Six and seven.
Okay, um, I did think, uh, hopefully you got a revised uh list of questions. But um um you can pass and come back to this later after in your closing statement too. We did send her a revised list, so um, but the next question though might help you uh formulate an answer. Because uh, we're going to address some big issues in Carbondale on that, so uh, with your permission, Ms. Maxwell, I'll move on to question six.
Uh, yeah, I'm prepared for that.
Hello?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Now I can, yes. What what did you just say?
I said, yes, I'm uh prepared to answer this question.
Okay, all right. Um, for the general public, I'd like to um give a little overview for this next question and that is as uh Mr. Luz indicated, uh, the Carbondale City Council recently uh, passed a resolution authorizing the manager to establish a nonprofit corporation in the form of a community housing trust. A community housing trust is a private nonprofit corporation that can provide access to secure, affordable housing for community members. Housing trusts improve housing affordability by separating the ownership of land and housing. Trusts often provide additional services such as rental assistance, credit counseling and access to loans. With that said, um, after we have, uh, the Carbondale has established this, the city is encouraged to establish initial funding so the housing trust can proceed with hiring a director and begin working on improving neighborhoods. Will you, as a city council member, continue to encourage support for such a program? And that question should be answered by Mr. Zerlinden, Mr. Franaburger and Mr. Grant. Ms. Maxwell, you might address this, the other issue at the at the closing statement and that'll that'll catch you up. Um, okay, Mr. Zerlinden?
Yes, 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 yes. This is one of the best things that uh, the city has done in terms of housing in a really long time. Uh, the the housing grants uh, that we already have on the books are a fantastic program that have been underutilized for years, but in the last three or so years have really started to gain momentum. And so that's great. Uh, every time that we can get somebody to commit to living in Carbondale for five years based on that recapture agreement is a huge win for us. Um, this uh organization will help Carbondale to decrease, decrease the number of dilapidated properties. Um, and exactly what Claire said, like, we have this perception, other people have this perception of Carbondale that there's a bunch of vacant dilapidated properties. There are some, but how many is super subjective and without data, it's very hard to to work on it and so this housing trust is going to help us to either rehab properties or tear them down if they cannot be brought back. Um, it's going to help us to uh find vacant land that could be redeveloped and incentivize people to redevelop it. Um, the overall feeling of safety in our town is going to be better because of this housing program, because of the the housing trust. The attractiveness to investors and when I say investors, like new home buyers or people that are looking to invest in rental property. It's going to be a better place to invest if there are our last, are less properties that need to be torn down or need to be fully rehabbed. And so this is a a fantastic program. How much money can we send to it?
Okay, all right, thank you. Mr. Franaburger?
Yes, I am in complete support for the Community Housing Trust Program. Um, being a private nonprofit organization, it will depend upon uh financial support. And that is where I hope that the city can seek out other community partners and regional partners to uh help with the finance of this organization like uh banks, foundation and grant programs. And individuals uh invest back into their community because this way we can help people to have uh affordable housing, nice housing and get rid of some of the dilapidated properties we have in town. So it's a plus, plus, plus for Carbondale.
Mr. Grant?
You? I've been talking about a housing trust for years, so I'm really excited to be participating and being able to vote yes for this. Um, the city has some ARPA funds available right now that we, I believe, would qualify to actually kickstart this organization. And because it is a housing trust and a non-for-profit, it can reach out to not only the Illinois Housing Authority, but also HUD uh, among with others and really, you know, hopefully get finance going down the years. I think it's going to be great. It's very difficult for a young family getting started to, or a young person getting started to afford a house. Even though money's been cheap, it's hard to uh with the wages that the way they are um, right now to save up enough money to put your money down. And one of the things the housing trust can do along with the city's program that we've already got in place is make it available and affordable for people to get into a house where they feel like they own a piece of this town and this community and can feel good about themselves.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, and I was, I'm excited about that program too. Number seven, and that would be answered by Mr. Luz, Ms. Maxwell and Mr. Zerlinden. What we, what would you do to decrease gun violence in Carbondale? Uh, Mr. Luz?
Well, this is a problem that has affected my family directly. Uh, there have been several shootings within a single block of my co-parent's home. You can see the house where the shootings are occurring from her front window and my son spends half his time there, half with me and half with her. And so it's unacceptable to me. It's got to be dealt with and for personal reasons as well as public reasons. Uh, one thing that's important to know is that there is a relatively small group of people who are doing the shootings. And uh, they are largely the same group of people who are the victims of the shootings. Uh, the city council asked SIU to do an evidence-based needs assessment and we received their report. We have heard a presentation on it last council meeting and we had an array of solutions that were suggested to us. Uh, of the possible solutions that we got, there are two that I prefer and I I like them especially because I think they work really well if they're employed together. Uh, one is what the report refers to as conflict mediation and restorative justice. The goal of this is to identify that small group of people who are doing the shootings and reach out to them in an organized way to attempt to lure them out of a life of violence, to offer them alternatives to the the life that they are currently living. It also includes programs like Cure Violence, which treats violence like an epidemic. And it aims to prevent it in the same way that you would prevent an epidemic. The other strategy is focused deterrence initiatives and essentially what that means is that if we've offered you uh, a way out of this lifestyle and you choose not to take it, we will begin pulling levers both in the justice system and we will begin pulling levers both in the justice system and the social services system to try to coax you out. And I might.
All right. Okay, um, Ms. Maxwell.
Gun violence is imperative and an intricate and complex problem. It requires evidence-based, multi-layered solutions. The first question one might ask is why is there gun violence? And the answer that most expect is about drugs and gang violence. The real and true answer is the lack of, the lack of people that care, the lack of resources, the lack of affordable housing, the lack of employment, um, the lack of something to do and somewhere to go, lack of unity in the community. I could go on all day, but I don't have that much time. Gun violence is a disease, just like drug and alcohol addiction. We have, and when I say we, Carbondale United has an evidence-based cure for this disease that's raging in our neighborhoods and killing innocent children, teens, and adults. This, uh, cure will take a village to administer to medicine. So we need partners in hospitals, clergy, city official educators, and law enforcement, um, community service providers and community members. Uh, they don't only monitor the community, they monitor the hospital. And I like to also say, this is very personal for me, because I buried a child because of gun violence. Thank you.
Oh my. Well, thank you, Ms. Maxwell. Oh boy. Mr. Zerlinden.
All right. So for me, uh, there are several things here that we need to be discussing. Coordination is one of them. There are already people doing a lot of this work, and so making sure that we carefully engage with them to bring them on board or to get on board with what they're doing is going to be imperative. Uh, the last thing we want is to have, hi, I'm from the government, I'm here to help try to stop our gun violence, and that's, that's not what we need to do. We need to be bringing everyone together, uh, to put a plan together. Um, we need to be injecting funds, focusing funds on youth programs, and figuring out how to help those kids escape that violence even for a few hours a day. So looking at Boys and Girls Club, looking at some of the things that Carbondale United is doing to help give a safe space for kids to, uh, kids and teens to be, uh, safe, but also to be outside of, uh, witnessing violence. Um, and we need to figure out how we can work with different organizations, work with the state's attorney's office, work with our local Carbondale PD to find out what they need, um, and to figure out creative ways to get it. If they need a piece of technology and it's super expensive, we need to be looking at grants, we need to be looking at different ways that we can help them do their job as, as well as they possibly can, so that we can have safer streets. Uh, I think the pieces are all here. We just need everybody to be working together on the same page.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Moving on to question eight, which is more or less a follow-up to this past question. Uh, would you, as a city council member, take action to establish a summer youth employment program for the city of Carbondale? Mr., this will be answered by Mr. Frannaburger, Mr. Grant, and Ms. Kilman. Mr. Frannaburger?
Okay, um, if funds can be found, it would be good to have a, a summer youth employment program. Uh, besides just the city providing jobs, I'd like to see the business community step up and, um, have somebody on city staff collect a listing of jobs that are available. You see, help wanted signs all over Carbondale, so I would like to see the Chamber of Commerce and Carbondale Main Street also help with a summer jobs program for the, for the youth, uh, to keep them occupied through the summer months, and then also to learn new skills and responsibilities, uh, by providing jobs to them during the summer. So if the funds are, are available, we should try that, but it needs to be, uh, not only the city, but also the business community helping us to create those jobs.
Thank you, Mr. Frannaburger. Mr. Grant.
Go here. I'm sorry, I couldn't figure out how to unmute myself. Sorry. Um, yes, we have tried this before, and it sometimes works out okay. Sometimes it's not so good, but, um, I'm all for it. It would depend on what it is and how it was structured and how it would be put together. But breaking, uh, getting, uh, our youth out and giving them something constructive to do and actually putting a couple of dollars in their pocket so they can go have some fun after their hard work, I would support that 100%.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Kilman.
My answer is certainly, um, especially if it prioritized our, uh, younger residents starting businesses of their own. I think that's something that really appeals to me. Um, anything that I can do to deepen a, uh, a shared, uh, feeling of investment in our common home that we all engage with among our people is definitely something that I am willing to work on. Interestingly enough, I had this, uh, in another question, but it sort of applies here. Um, my buddy Jason Ashmore, the mayor of Sessor, um, if you are a Sessor resident and you would like to open a business in Sessor, you can go down to the city and ask for either a loan or some seed funds to start or incentivize, um, a small business or, uh, some, some measure of entrepreneurship. And if you drive through Sessor these days, I don't know how many of you have been there recently, um, it looks, how I can only describe a post-war, um, golden age, um, sort of, uh, mom and pop shops lining the main drag down there. And so I think that there's a, a real possibility, other people are laying groundwork, um, that we can certainly build off of and take our cues from.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Kilman. All right, number nine. Uh, and this would be addressed by Ms. Maxwell, Mr. Zerlinden, and Mr. Frannaburger. What measures would you suggest to build trust between the police and community residents? Ms. Maxwell?
Yes. Uh, the first and most important measure is rebuilding the relationship between the community and the police. Just like in any relationship, the police need to date the community first. I like to see officers that live in the neighborhood, walk through the neighborhood, and provide resources to the families in the neighborhoods of Carbondale. Once this dating progress, process has progressed, then the police can make an effort to step into the next phase of rela, rebuilding the relationship. We must include representation, effective communication, and a sense of caring, which is easy to accomplish when you, as the officer, feel that this is your community too. You see, when you care about something or someone, you treat them right, you talk to them with respect, and you reach out to help them. You care about them. The most important foundation of a relationship is trust, commitment, appreciating each other, ending resentment, being vulnerable, sharing, and communicating fairly. We also need to take some of the load off the police officers like traffic stops, mental health, and DV calls, and we can do this by having other professionals in social service fields assist with these calls. Also, we should think about starting a task force that actually hears complaints and has some type of power to do something about the complaints when the issue is actually wrong. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Zerlinden.
So when I participated in the, uh, city of Carbondale, Carbondale Police Department Five-on-Five Program, one of the discussions that we had was, was super interesting to me and shed light on something that I, uh, didn't have a lot of experience with. And so, uh, the police officers, uh, in the room, all of which were pretty professional, um, said that they hadn't been invited to, uh, an event that was happening in, in a park and weren't sure if they should go. They weren't sure if they'd be welcome. They weren't sure if they would be, uh, met with some kind of resistance, uh, for joining an event that, again, they weren't invited to. Um, and the residents in the city said, why didn't you reach out? Why didn't you reach out to leadership? We would have loved to have you there. Uh, you could have been there in uniform, you could have been there in not uniform. We could have worked something out to make this be a celebration of everyone in the community, including the police officers. But that breakdown in communication happened and stopped what could have been a really cool, uh, thing. And so I, I think, you know, we need to be holding the police department accountable to taking those first steps and reaching out and being involved. Uh, but we also then need to be supporting them and helping figure out how to get them to be fully staffed. I don't think it's reasonable to expect them to be reaching out to go to community events when they have worked double shifts and there aren't enough officers to cover just the basics of, of running our police department. And so figuring out some different ways to support them and being able to have enough staff to do what they have to do so that they can be more proactive in what we'd like them to do.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Zerlinden. Mr. Frannaburger?
Uh, in today's day and time, uh, most cities are in a real crunch for meeting their staffing levels for police. But if staffing levels would allow, I would advocate for more foot and bicycle patrols, uh, in the neighborhoods to be able to go through, stop and talk to neighbors. Uh, so they see them not as a reaction to crime, but as everyday life. And also to walk through the downtown, talk to the business owners and to the diners and shoppers. I think that would be a big plus as far as, uh, police relations. And also, as, as previously has been mentioned, I'd like to see the police probably it'd be off-duty policemen at more community, community events. Uh, that way they could just show up in a T-shirt or a sweatshirt that identified him as a police officer, but not in their normal uniforms. So people can see that they're, they're citizens and humans just like the rest of us, so. And have the, um, maybe the police organize cer, certain activities in our parks, whether it be a a basketball contest or whatnot, just to show that the police are, are humans just like the rest of us.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Frannaburger. All right, number 10. Okay, there have been a number of multiple closings of retail stores. What plans do you have to attract and assist new small businesses to Carbondale? This would be Mr. Grant, Ms. Kilman, and Mr. Lewis. Mr. Grant.
Thank you again. Um, I'm really looking at, uh, trying to go reach out to a product that is organic, and going down to Paducah to look at their renting plant, and then try and put together people and organize even members of the community um, to try and bring a rent-it plant here. With the, with the fiber that is made from him, we can produce clothing, um, beach mats, umbrellas, carryout boxes and eliminate, if we can get a carryout box for our restaurants, we can eliminate styrofoam from our community. Um, the other incentives is just to go out and see what kind of grant funds are available, either through the federal or state government that we can bring into the community that will help assist with startup and encourage everyone to shop locally for those startups and people that are already here. Um, you know, the big box stores are kind of going out. They've expanded so quickly, they've collapsed amongst, uh, back on, in on themselves like a house of cards, as evidenced by our Best Buys and our Macy's and a few other large stores. Um, those times are changing because of online, uh, growth and online shopping. So anyone that wants to try and start a new business in this town, I welcome wholeheartedly, and I'll do anything else I can do to, uh, make them successful.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Grant. Ms. Kilman.
So the sorts of stores, uh, we've seen close-up shop in Carbondale have been largely corporate, big box, brick and mortar stores, which essentially constitute capital leaks of sorts. These businesses are incentivized to open a location in Carbondale through tax breaks, meaning the city investment into infrastructure they rely on to do businesses can't be regained. The density at which they are developed is so low, it further hinders any tax we can recoup. And what they provide in exchange is low wage work to our residents and items for us to consume, upon which they make a profit that ultimately doesn't circulate back through Carbondale with successive investments. Um, it gets flung out to the coasts or whatever metropolitan headquarters they are run from until they've squeezed out, uh, just enough from us that they, um, close, leaving us high and dry. And it winds up tanking the velocity of our money, which you want circulating locally as much as humanly possible. Um, sadly, the, the setup I just mentioned is standard economic development policy and is tantamount to selling our economic heart and soul. I have always been in support of resilient, regionally-focused economies, um, intent on extending small business acumen and offered opportunities for entrepreneurship to Carbondale residents.
Thank you, Ms. Kilman. Mr. Lewis.
Well, it's important to note that, you know, this is not a problem unique to Carbondale. Uh, national economic forecasters have been predicting what they call the retail apocalypse uh, for several years. Basically, retail spaces overbuilt nationwide, malls are struggling everywhere. And, uh, as Ms. Kilman pointed out, most of the, the stores that, uh, are closing here are big stores that are struggling nationwide. An example of that would be Bed Bath &amp; Beyond. They're in bankruptcy. They're closing stores across the country. Uh, that's not a unique Carbondale problem. It's also important to note that even as some stores are closing, there are others that are arriving or expanding. Uh, even during the deepest part of the, the COVID pandemic, we saw Home Goods open stores. Uh, the Consume Cannabis Dispensary chose to locate in Carbondale. Uh, stores like Old Navy and Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, uh, uh, or excuse me, Bath &amp; Body Works are expanding into larger spaces that are now across the street from the mall. Uh, nevertheless, though, retail does go where the disposable incomes. And so we need to look to increase our population, and we need to pursue policies that increase the prosperity of our people. Uh, I do think we should focus on what's called economic guarding, gardening as opposed to economic hunting. That means that we focus on our own population. That's our biggest asset. Uh, that would include creating coworking space where people can share office space and a maker space where people can use shared tools uh, to create goods that they can then sell. Uh, local businesses are rooted in the community rather than simply street seeking to extract value from it. And although I'm running out of time, I will put in a plug for, uh, preservation. New business needs old buildings. And you can see that in, uh, Murphysboro, Carterville, and, and Sessor, as was mentioned earlier.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Okay, moving on to number 11. Let's see. We have several agencies that provide services to the homeless in Carbondale. For example, Good Samaritan Center and the Warming Center. Do you, do they have enough resources? What can the city do and the community do to address homelessness? And we have, let's see, Mr. Zerlinden, Ms. Frannaburger, and Mr. Grant. Mr. Zerlinden, please.
So there are never enough resources, um, especially, you know, in, in these kind of situations, there's, there's just not. Um, we seem to have a lot of short-term shelter-style housing for people who need it tonight. Um, but the programs for people who need housing for the next six months, who need a fresh start, who need transitional housing are a lot harder to come by, a lot harder to get into. Um, and the lack of support from social services in general as a whole is not helping that. And so, you know, I think this, uh, there's obviously not enough resources, but I think we need, uh, a multi-pronged approach to what resources we do need to give these people. Um, I would love to see us, as a city, look for opportunities for more long-term housing, more transitional housing, more programs that will help people to um, not have to be homeless and who can find, uh, dignity and find, you know, either find a job or find, uh, the correct disability to get on to, uh, live a good and productive and happy life and fulfilling life. Um, the staff and the leadership of, uh, both of those organizations are doing a great job with what they've been given. But I can't imagine trying to care for over a hundred homeless people in the city of Carbondale, you know, how can we sustain that long-term? We have to start helping them to transition to something else, and I think that's going to be our, our biggest challenge over the next few years.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Thank you. Mr. Frannaburger.
Coordination of efforts to, to, uh, combat homelessness is very important to prevent duplication of efforts and funds. Uh, we do need more resources in the community to help with the homeless problem. Uh, community needs more extensive resources, like a behavioral health residential facility for people with mental health issues, because it's been proven that homelessness, the major cause of homelessness is mental health issues. So I would like to see, uh, our, all of our local churches, SIU, and the city partner to construct a small housing units village to serve the homeless and provide assistance to help individuals and families get back on their feet to a more normal life of housing and employment. I know over in Springfield, Missouri, there was a, uh, a retired couple that lived in the downtown in a loft area, and they noticed all the homelessness, and they were able to organize their community and also, uh, receive a, a fairly large grant, and they're, they're building these small little houses in a certain area of Springfield to house the homeless, to get them back on their feet. in a certain area of Springfield to house the homeless, to get them back on their feet and get them going again. So I'd like to see that also done here in Carbondale.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Grant.
Thank you. Um, I I have to just say yes to what Mr. Zerlinden and Mr. Franabagger just said. The uh Warming Shelter in Good Sam been doing a great job. The Warming Shelter has exceeded any and all expectations I had for them. And uh, I can't sing their praise enough, but they're going to continue to go on and we need to continue to work as a community. Years ago, I was in the community of Salt Lake City, Utah. And I asked a gentleman going down the street, I said, I don't see anyone sleeping in your doorways uh uh or any homeless people in this town. They had converted one of their own schools, old schools, into a homeless shelter. And one was the lights out for families that with children and people who were able to get work and one was the lights on for those people that were um troubled and had uh emotional distress. But their whole goal with that program was to get people from homelessness to back into the community as functioning and useful members of the society. And I think it's a real really good program and something we should look at and possibly try and implement here in this community. And always, always give to your homeless shelter and your Good Samaritan Shelter if you can. A couple of dollars every day will go a long way.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Grant. Thank you. Okay, moving on to question 12. Uh, what did we learn from the last eclipse experience in Carbondale? And what should be done differently in 2024 to more thoroughly accommodate the influx of people who are interested in being present for this special event? Uh, that will be Ms. Kilman, Mr. Luz, and Ms. Maxwell. Ms. Kilman.
So when the last eclipse took place, I was working in a corporate retail sales environment um with increased expectations on retail purchases due to the eclipse. I believe if memory and math serves, I was all of 21, 22. Um, revenue projections were concurrent um with what city officials estimated in daytime population for the duration of the eclipse. Um, but quite obviously, no one was spending um the eclipse shopping. Um, and so uh sales underperformed on the day of the eclipse. Anecdotally speaking, most of my friends and loved ones traveled to more open spaces outside of town to watch the eclipse. Um, and I think managing our expectations and marrying that with the effective utilization of data from the last eclipse will lead to an improved management of city resources uh for our next one, which is very exciting and uh, you know, significant in all sorts of beautiful ways, um which will hopefully uh the city resources will hopefully be allocated toward events for spectators um and incentives to come to Carbondale as opposed to other places like free city parking and certain infrastructural improvements for the sake of navigability of residents um and the ease of our guests that would be duly beneficial um both before, during, and hopefully long after the eclipse.
Right. Okay, Mr. Luz.
Well, I have to admit, this is one of my few regrets during my time in office. I I never really believed in eclipse mania. It just never made sense to me. And I'm embarrassed to admit that I just, I didn't have the confidence to say that at the time. Everybody else thought that it was going to be this grand thing and there were going to be hundreds of thousands of people here. And I thought, well, gosh, am I really right and they're all wrong? I guess so. So that was one lesson that I learned from it is that when when there is a mania going on and it doesn't make sense to you, you gotta speak up confident or not, pretend you're confident and say it anyway. Um, so that is a regret of mine. Uh, the last eclipse did help generate some support for making some cosmetic improvements and improvements in Carbondale. I do appreciate that. That was a positive outcome. Uh, we did learn that people simply do not care enough about a few extra seconds of totality to travel to Carbondale rather than viewing it closer to home. Uh, so we shouldn't put a bunch of money into it. It's just not going to generate the return on improvement that we would like it to to generate. Instead, we should make sure that we're welcoming as we always are. Uh, we should be friendly. We should be accommodating. We should do another round of sprucing up. Well, you know, if we're inviting guests, then we want to make sure that the town looks nice. Uh, but I don't think it's worthwhile to put together uh a big event anticipating hundreds of thousands of people because that simply isn't going to happen. That's the reality that we need to just accept that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Maxwell.
What we learned from the last eclipse uh to what I seen in the vision and talked to people when I actually got this question is that Carbondale wasn't prepared for people all around the world to invade our small universe. Uh, we were in no way ready to accommodate probably twice as many gathers as we will have in 2024 because it's a double eclipse. Uh, parking, housing, events, transportation, food, security, even souvenirs were a bust. The question I asked, how many event planners do we need to assist us? We need to work with all the businesses in Southern Illinois and possibly break crowds in strategic places from river to river. A major crowd control plan has to be in place by the end of this year. Entertainment could be shared at fairgrounds, parks, stadiums, et cetera, and parking. At the last one was a disaster. It needs to be guided on the outskirts of the city using public transportation, a bus for eclipse goers for events and help with the flow of traffic for residents. I was told that some residents were in a traffic jam for hours. Uh, medical tents, food station, resource tents, fluid throughout the city and not just in a couple of paces. Maybe some communication towers, energy sources should be considered. We have to work with Major. Okay, I'm gonna thank you. I went a little bit long, had a little bit more to say, but all in all, I hope we be prepared for 2024.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Maxwell. Uh, okay, we're starting to get to the to the end of our questions. But I will uh say we're going to combine number 13 and 14. So I will read the question as as one and I'm going to ask the responses in alphabetical order just so everybody has a chance to uh address these questions or to uh share a thought or an idea. Is there a question you did not have the opportunity to answer that you would like to address now? Or are there other issues in the city that as a city council member you would like to address? So we'll start with Mr. Franabagger.
Um, I would like to answer question number 10 that originally was question number eight.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Do you want to read that one first?
Okay, I'll read it. That's fine. There have been multiple closings of retail stores. What plans do you have to attract and assist new small businesses to Carbondale?
To me, economic development is job number one. It should be our top priority. To me, economic, everything evolves around economic development. So I would like to establish a business startup grant program since we already have uh grant programs for uh first time home buyers to convert rental properties into single family housing and uh curb appeal grants. So why shouldn't we have a grant to assist and provide some seed money for small businesses looking to start startup here in Carbondale? And I would strongly publicize the advantages of the city of Carbondale having enterprise zones and TIF districts. There are many advantages to that for economic development. And also I would have the city partner with both the Chamber of Commerce and the SIU Small Business Incubator for a training program and Assistance Resource Center for new small businesses to create more success stories for our city.
Thank you, Mr. Franabagger. Mr. Grant.
Thank you. Um, I just wanna think about the eclipse that's upcoming. Uh, I had a really grand experience in the last one. Um, we tried to temporarily suspend some zoning and we talk about all the vacant houses that we have in this town and how are we going to accommodate a lot of people? And uh, one of the things that I advocated for the last time around was let's relax our zoning as far as rental and or Airbnb type situations and let people rent the vacant houses that are in good enough shape to rent, not um trashy, and collect the um hotel motel revenue off of it. Um, I did quite well. I helped up my farm. I had a hundred and twenty people camping on the farm from all across the nation. Uh, one was the gentleman that runs firewall for the federal government. One was the gentleman who organizes the robotics competition across the nation. And I think uh Les Odell, who was the head of Chamber of Commerce at that time summed it up the best. Let's not panic. The uh total eclipse is the Super Bowl of nerds. And I'm not saying nerds is a bad thing. Nerds rule. So every, my experience was everybody was very kind and very caring with each other and everybody enjoyed themselves.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Ms. Kilman.
Maggie, can you give me number nine, please?
Sure. What measures would you suggest to build trust between the police and community residents?
I chose a challenging one for myself to revisit. I acknowledge this question as uniquely uh complicated. I think it boils down to a philosophical quandary around police function. As it stands, police officers have been tasked with taking on the bulk of labor around building our community for us and solving problems for not just our society, but most of American life, while also simultaneously being tasked with the tall moral order of carrying a badge, a gun, and the legal impunity to commit lethal force. I don't think it's healthy for the police officers we have, nor do I think it inspires much trust from the public for our law enforcement agencies at the municipal level to grapple with this dual function. I think there are supplementary agencies the city can invest in tantamount to other tools in our toolbox. Right now we are trying to solve every problem with a knife when we desperately need chisels and screwdrivers and paintbrushes and um more. And I think most people on both sides of every aisle sense this as an issue, how we go about solving it um is another matter altogether, but I'm certainly open.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kilman. Thank you. Mr. Luz.
Well, I I wish I could have answered them all. I prefer to answer all the questions, but um I've only got a minute and thirty seconds, so I'll I'll take a couple of them on. One is number six. That's the one about the Community Housing Trust. And you don't have to bother with reading it. They remember it. I I'm just glad to hear people answer that question and to hear them say that, yes, they will continue to support that. Uh, that's good to know that that will move forward regardless of whether I'm here. Uh, I will tell you that when I first proposed it at the council retreat in 2019, I was greeted with befuddlement by staff and it took years of constant pressure. But we finally got it done and we done, we did it unanimously. And it's important to have someone who will apply years of constant pressure to get things done that need done, who will bring good ideas and make them happen. Um, and I'll, for better or for worse, I'm relentless and I just, I will never stop. Um, and staff knows that. We've we've kind of come to an agreement on that. Um, also with respect to the the question about the uh the police, um, you know, I do agree that that it is, we've asked too much of police. They can't be both social workers and uh police officers and we need to start separating those. We have started that. We hired a social worker. We're looking to hire two or three more soon. And I think that's important as well. I think that that uh if people didn't find themselves arrested or their family arrested when they call about a mental health crisis that's gotten out of hand, then I I do think that would help. And then finally, I'll put in a plug for the parks. Um, we really have done great with those. I'd like to do more.
Thank you, Mr. Luz. Ms. Maxwell.
Uh, yes, I like to, well, my question numbers are probably not right, but I want to go back to the uh it was originally questioned that about homelessness.
Okay, yes, let me get that and I can read it to you again. Um, we have several agencies that provide services to the homeless in Carbondale. For example, the Good Samaritan Center and the Warming Center. Do they have enough resources? What can the city do and the community do to address homelessness?
Um, I want to just uh point out that in Champaign-Urbana, the city council just approved $850,000 in funds from their American Rescue Plan to cover a project called Hope Village that creates a new community to help residents who are unhoused. Uh, the purpose of this project is to support people who are in need of constant medical attention while they have no shelter to protect themselves. We know that many of our unhoused are in need of services for physical and mental and medical assistance. Carbondale's unhoused are our residents and we want to be an asset to society by working. But they can't keep a job or ultimately afford healthcare if they don't have a permanent place to live. Uh, the Carley Hospital, the University of Illinois-Champaign in Champaign County Healthcare. Consumers are all working on this project. U of I contributed a million. Carley contributed a million. Together, they will raise future funds to keep this program sustainable. We have the means to implement this model here in Carbondale. Homelessness is going across the nation and we are not exempt. We want to changes in Carbondale. Well, it begins with systemic changes.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell. Mr. Zerlinden.
Okay, so we combined 13 and 14, right? So this can be a question that I didn't, okay, perfect. So there wasn't necessarily a question that I didn't uh get to ask that I necessarily wanted to, but I did want to talk really quick about schools and vacation rentals. So uh as a Realtor, I get requests for specific school districts all the time. Um, I would love for people to always be saying, I want District 95. I want to be in Carbondale. Um, that's the school that I want my kids to uh grow up in, and that's not always the case. And so uh I would, our schools have the leadership. They have the teachers. They have the staff. Um, they have the programming even to uh really make us the educational hub of Southern Illinois. And so I think we need to be finding ways to support them, uh, finding ways to help those teachers to uh deal with whatever they are need to deal with in the schools so that they can uh continue to teach. We don't want to be losing teachers. We don't want to be losing staff. Um, and we especially don't want to be losing kids. We don't want to be having kids drop out or transfer uh to an alternative school. We want to have those kids be healthy and supported uh in the school district. And then really quick about vacation rentals, we've got to relax our regulations on Airbnb properties uh within reason. We have, we've got to continue to have them be uh inspected and held to a high standard, but we are losing visitors uh with our restrictions right now. We have people staying in Murphysboro. And when you get an Airbnb in Murphysboro, you go to Seventeenth Street and then you hit the wine trails and none of that money comes to Carbondale. And so we need to find out some ways that we can uh ease into the Airbnb industry uh so that we can start taking advantage of the money that we're losing right now.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Zerlinden. Uh, this has been most informative on all these questions and I have to acknowledge each and every one of you for being so prepared and being so flexible in our gathering tonight. Uh, with that said, we'll start our closing comments. And uh we will do an exact opposite. We will start with Mr. Zerlinden and go the opposite way from uh alphabetical order. So it's one minute for each closing statement. And Mr. Zerlinden, can you start us off?
Absolutely. So I want you guys to picture Carbondale 10 years from now. It's unrealistic to think that the people that you choose to run Carbondale for the next four years are going to make the changes that are going to absolutely change Carbondale. But I think 10 years out, we have a huge chance. The shootings have all but stopped 10 years from now. Uh, we've worked with a number of organizations to help make that happen. Uh, houses have been renovated and the ones that we couldn't save are now green spaces. Our police force is fully staffed and that includes multiple mental health professionals so that everybody's doing what they're best at. Our businesses are thriving and non-traditional businesses feel like they can experiment here. Um, and that's that's huge. Our city spaces are well maintained and when something breaks, everybody gets their phone out and uses See Click Fix because that's the way of the future. Uh, Freddie, the homeless guy that hangs out by subway, has a place to stay and he has the mental health uh services that he needs. My kids are 15 and 12 and they're in a school district that helps and supports all kids uh become the best versions of themselves. I really think our future is bright, guys.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Zerlinden. Ms. Maxwell. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Zerlinden. Ms. Maxwell.
Um, I want to thank you for allowing us this time and I want to send out a great appreciation to all the join to hear us candidates. I just want to comment real quick on, uh, what Mr., uh, Justin said. I just want to add something to your list. And that is more diversity within like the police departments and places and in housing. And when you mentioned, you didn't mention, but when Mr. Franberger mentioned chamber, there is a black chamber with 200 black businesses that don't have a home to put their business in. Uh, I just want to say that data shows that there's a low percentage of voters who participate in local election. There is no easier, easiest place to change laws that you don't like with local and state government except by voting. My name is Nancy Maxwell and I am asking for your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maxwell. Mr. Luz.
Well, when, uh, I want to thank you all for attending and for listening to all of this. Uh, when I ran in 2015 for the first time, I was in, I ran as an agent of change. And eight years later, I'm still an agent of change. I was an outsider then and I'm an outsider now. Um, and that's just who I am and that's who I'll always be. I've spent eight years working hard for you. I have gotten things done that people thought couldn't be done. And if you'll let me, I will keep doing that. What we need here is people who are willing to, uh, push things through even over opposition, uh, to overcome problems and to keep things moving. I'm asking each of you to vote for me and send me back to work for four more years. I will be, uh, visiting your doorsteps soon enough if I've not already been there. And I'm happy to answer any of your questions. Uh, what you'll get from me always is candor. I will always tell you what I'm doing and why. You'll never get platitudes from me. Uh, and I think that that's important and I'll keep doing that if I serve a third term.
Thank you, Mr. Luz. Ms. Kilman.
So in my closing statement, um, I would like to address the demographic elephant in the room. There are currently three women running for office in the city of Carbondale at present. If you'd like to vote for us, um, I hope you'll do so because we are the best candidates for these positions. If you, if you feel that that's the case, um, there is an opportunity to have a woman-led, woman-majority council. Um, if who is installed for the seat potentially left behind by Mayor Protam Harvey, should she assume the office of mayor, is, uh, also a woman, then even more deeply so. Um, with the rights of women under attack in neighboring states, Carbondale has a beautiful opportunity to continue to be a beacon of protecting the human rights of its residents by empowering the candidacies of the women running in this election cycle. Um, and I look forward to serving you in whatever capacity you choose to place me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kilman. Mr. Grant.
Thank you, Ms. Flanagan. I think it's really apparent that everyone running tonight really cares about this community. And, um, I don't think you could make a bad choice. I have been, uh, pushed for progressive and greening up and trying to move us in and pay attention to the future that's coming with climate change. I work outside in it. Um, trying to take care of our staff. I think we have an excellent staff and I think they've been doing a good job. We have managed to make some wonderful improvements in the community. We've got a new downtown streetscape. We've got a brand new Oakland street. We've got solar on City Hall and next to the police station. I've told the solar is providing at least 90% of all of the energy product use that our city buildings have, which, uh, kudos to that. Uh, so we're making a difference and we have protection in place for everyone to seek and get the medical care that they need and deserve. So thank you. I appreciate your vote if you want me for another third term.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Mr. Franaburger.
First of all, thank you everyone for participating in this, uh, public forum for city council candidates. I care very deeply about Carbondale and want to see it continue to grow and prosper. Please vote in the April 4th city election and tell your friends, family and neighbors. Unfortunately, in the last three city elections, only 13 to 22% of Carbondale registered voters exercise their right to vote. A very pitiful turnout. Actually, city elections affect you more on a day-to-day basis than do state and federal elections. Polls on Tuesday, April 4th will be open from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM. Early voting at the Carbondale Civic Center is available on Monday, March the 20th, Thursday, the 23rd, Monday, the 27th, Wednesday, the 29th and Friday, the 31st from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM each day. I am fourth on the ballot for city council and would appreciate your continued support and vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Franaburger. Well, this has, uh, been a very, um, insightful evening and each of you has, has really given a wonderful presentation of who you are and your efforts to become leaders in our community. Um, I just thank you all for appearing. And if we were in person, this would be the time for applause. So please accept that as your virtual applause and, uh, of our appreciation. Uh, on behalf of the League of Women Voters, I encourage the community, our community, to continue being informed, informed voters. On April 4th, the polls will be open from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM. You can vote early at the county clerk's office. And, uh, in, in March this month, the following dates, you'll be able to vote early at the Carbondale Civic Center. Uh, Monday, March 20th, Thursday, March 23rd, Monday, March 27th, Wednesday, March 29th and Friday, March 31st. Again, on behalf of the League of Women Voters, thank you and thank each of your candidates for stepping up to lend leadership to our community. And also, thank you for, um, the Carbondale Public Library for hosting this evening's forum. They are true community servants. And with that, I'll say good night to you all.